I think Jennifer Barnett's going to assist as well. First is a budget amendment for the Inca Commerce Park access road funding. And then there's also, following this, an easement with the Inca Water Corporation for the Inca Heritage Trail, separate issues but related.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
We've got a presentation we're going to walk through here in a minute, but I wanted to introduce you to a host of partners that have been taking some seats behind me. You probably know many of them, but in case you don't, I'll make some introductions. So on the far left, my left, we have Martin Lewis with Fletcher Partners, Tim Anderson with DOT, Steve Cannon, also with DOT, Erica Anderson, Land of Sky Regional Council, Clark Duncan, you know him, and Jennifer Barnett, who keeps us straight on the budget. So with that said, we're going to walk into the presentation. I'll walk us through, if you have any specific questions, I'll probably call in these folks because they know more than me on a lot of this stuff. So, history, how did we get here? We've got a picture of a clock tower from the 1900s that represents the old Inca industrial plant, just a reminder, about 4,000 people that were employed at that facility in the early 1900s. But, more relevant, in 2015, the county funded a bridge over Smokey Park Highway, or from Smokey Park Highway, over Hominy Creek. As you know, that bridge has not been connected historically to anything on the other side. The reason it wasn't connected was a lack of funding, but with all that said, let's get to the point, Bullet Three. The county's been working to sort of connect this bridge to the interior access roads within Inca Commerce Park, and we have a proposal today that shows the funding sources that we've been able to pull together based on work with our partners. And those partners are here today, includes Appalachian Regional Commission, who's not here, as well as those that are sitting on the front row. In terms of the bridge and layout, so we've got a map on the right to give you an idea of where Smokey Park Highway is, and then the insert, we're drawing out and showing you a picture of the actual bridge, so just to get everyone kind of oriented. Our requests this evening, so to approve the resolution, and in the resolution, there's three big items that we're asking. So the first is to approve an agreement with Fletcher Partners defining a cost share for the $1 million in additional costs, which I'll describe later in the presentation. Additionally, approve the budget amendment allocating funding for the $1 million additional costs. And finally, authorize the county manager to enter into an agreement with DOT so that any unused funds or cost overruns will be directed back to Buncombe County. And that third bullet, the reason we're asking for that is we're going through the process with DOT and don't have the agreement for you today, but would like to be able to work through that by authorizing the county manager to do so. Project description, so we're talking about the construction of about .2 miles of road that connects the existing Smokey Park Highway to the, or the Smokey Park Bridge to the existing walk-off way. This includes the construction of two industrial access lanes, so those are 12-foot wide lanes, with quote-unquote "complete streets" access. For those unfamiliar with complete streets, this is a DOT policy that requires any new streets that are constructed to also have pedestrians in mind. And so on these roads, you will see five-foot bicycle lanes, as well as curb and gutter, and an adjacent five-foot sidewalk. Additionally, walk-off way construction, when you approved the Hockon incentives, and Hockon was coming to town, committed to us, at that point DOT also chipped in and said that they had $1.3 million to support additional access road development. So that's a separate construction project that's going on, but wanted you to be aware of it. This project also includes upgraded signaling at 1923 and Inca Heritage. And finally, but crucially important to this, DOT will be managing the project, so the RFP process as well as the construction. DOT will accept right-of-way for the entire road, and DOT will maintain the road long-term. So that's important for us as a government entity to make sure that we're working with an entity that knows how to build roads, but also will maintain them long-term. In terms of what this project looks like, I know this is kind of a difficult graphic to read, but on the left, you know, I highlight in red the road that we're building. So that's sort of S-shaped figure. And then we zoom out on the right to show you kind of the two phases of the project. So Phase One, the walk-off way portion, is the blue section that I've highlighted. And then above that is Phase Two, the quote-unquote "Inca Heritage" section. And the reason I call these out separately is because they're going to proceed on different timelines. The Inca Heritage portion will proceed at a later date because we're waiting on ARC funding, which is Appalachian Regional Commission funding. Walk-off way portion will proceed a little bit quicker because we're just using DOT dollars, which are state dollars. So just wanted to call that out because we'll talk about that when we're as we go. At any point, if you have questions, please feel free to stop. In terms of the public benefits, so why are we looking at doing this? Why are you considering this as a board? Bullet One, you know, providing an alternative access from Sand Hill Road, which is a two-lane road, to the Smokey Park Highway, which is a five-lane road. As you're aware, the industrial park includes many industrial facilities, as well as a school. It also includes a future Inca substation, and Chief Howard Beddenfield is here, who can speak to that if necessary. So we're increasing transportation access for both Inca Elementary School and the future Inca substation. Additionally, we'll improve pedestrian access throughout Commerce Park. You know, I mentioned complete streets earlier, so that'll improve access within the park, can't speak to the roads outside of it. Additionally, we'll improve freight movement. So we already have 10 employers at the Commerce Park, an estimated 1,000 employees, and something like 250 freight loads daily. So the addition of a secondary access point, exit point, will be helpful for this project. And then finally, we'll promote future economic development. For those familiar with the area, there's about 50 acres that will now be accessible by road, and that will be something that we can attract additional companies to. So that's a list of the public benefits. There's definitely a handful, you know, transportation in general, education, and fire access, or excuse me, emergency response access, pedestrian accessibility, and economic development. In terms of project budget, this was provided to us by our friends here at DOT, who have been studying this for a good bit. This is the project budget, but also the sources of funding. So it's not a line-item budget, it just tells you who's paying for what. So the ARC is granting us $2 million. We're waiting on the very final approval for that to come through. It's made it through multiple phases, and we've been given a very strong indication that this will definitely be approved, but we're waiting on that final letter. Additionally, DOT's funding about $1.5 million. There's an asterisk there that indicates that about $1.3 million of that related to the Hockon access road, which we mentioned earlier, which leaves about $1 million in local costs. And so that's why we're here tonight, we're asking for your support for that additional $1 million, and the cost share that we're broken out for that. So, funding for the local costs. This is documented in the draft agreement that is in your packet, but wanted to just call it out here for those that have not read it, especially those in the public. So the proposed cost share is county is to provide 65% of the remaining local costs, so about $650,000, and Fletcher Partners is to provide 35%. Add those two numbers, you get to $1 million. Additionally, unused funds or overruns will be directed to Buncombe County. So if at the end of this project, it's $1 million, no change. If at the end of this project, it's $750,000, we'll have an agreement with DOT where that money comes back to Buncombe County, and then we'll distribute that back to Fletcher Partners based on the cost share we articulated. That does mean that if there is something that happens where the costs exceed the $1 million, we'll get to Bullet Three, which means that I'll be coming back to you, asking for additional funding, and hopefully not. DOT has reassured me on multiple instances that they feel very good about the cost estimate, the contingency's built in, but I did want to be crystal clear because that is important. So to bring that funding arrangement together, we've got a few agreements for you, or two agreements, rather, so they're listed here. Agreement One, which is an agreement with Fletcher Partners, that's in your packet. That defines the cost share, the 65-35% cost share. Agreement Two, the agreement with DOT, not in your packet, we're working on it and are asking for your authorization today to continue that negotiation with DOT. DOT has a pretty standard agreement that they work through, they just have to work it through Raleigh. Once it's ready, we'll pass it along, but just wanted you to be aware of that.
Do you need us to vet on that specifically, or just?
It's included in the resolution.
Okay.
All right, so then, with all that said, so we've got a bunch of agreements, we've got cost sharing, we've got some history, so if you approve this, what happens next? When can we expect a bridge to be connected to a road? And so, this is on your agenda today, February 18th. In April, we would expect that the county and Fletcher Partners approve, will provide $1 million to DOT because DOT wants the money in hand before they proceed with letting a contract. We can understand that. In the summer, we would expect the construction for Phase One to begin. So Phase One, again, that's the lower portion, that's the Hockon portion, and I can show it to you on the map if you'd like. In fall, we'd expect Phase Two to begin, which is the Inca Heritage portion, which is that upper portion that actually connects to the bridge. And then in spring of 2021, we would anticipate Phase One and Phase Two to be complete. You missed if I didn't read the first line to you in DOT, you should have stopped me before I got this far, but "This timeline is subject to change based on procurement, weather, and other delays." We know that construction projects change, and just wanted to give you all the timeline so you know what's coming, but we also recognize that, you know, if it rains every day for the next three months, that that's going to impact our schedule.
Tim, thanks for walking us through this. Where in the timeline would we project the ARC funding would come in?
That's great. And I would defer Erica to you. Do you have a rough idea of when the funding will come in, Erica?
It could be a few weeks.
Get up to the mic. Thank you.
It could be a few weeks, or it could be a month or so. The last email I had was between DOT and ARC, and I think we're, we've done the final paperwork to them.
So, that's our tentative project timeline. Any questions on that? All right, so then, bringing it back full circle, so what are we asking of the board today? We're asking for your approval of a resolution that includes three big pieces. The resolution includes a request to approve the agreement with Fletcher Partners that defines the cost share. It requests that you approve the budget amendment that allows movement of the money. And Jennifer Barnett can explain the budget amendment to you if you like. And then finally, requesting the authorized county manager to negotiate an agreement with DOT for the reimbursement of the funds or the cost overruns.
All right, but does approving the resolution accomplish everything that we need?
Does.
Great. Any questions? Comments?
Oh, yeah. Sure. There's no Item Four on there I got a problem with, I'll tell you. But, no, seriously, this has been, this has been going on for a long time. And if you, if you didn't know, and I'll just give a shout-out to him, somewhere underneath Tim Love's shirt is an S. I see it. He, with a lot of cooperation with a lot of other people, has been able to do some things, and I appreciate this. You know, this, we've got a road that we were told over and over, it's four and a half million dollars, over and over, that it's not going to happen, can't be done, can't be done, can't be done. But the people in the community, commissioners, others, did not accept that answer. Because we had built a bridge, but the goal of that bridge was to connect to the back of that school, so that people could walk across that bridge, take their kids to school, or drive there and keep the traffic off of Sand Hill, off of Sand Hill Road. And if you could do a drone, or get above it, and have a view above everything, and see how all these pieces are coming together, you know, it's amazing. You know, all the people that are here, and I spoke to someone from DOT, you know, this morning, and, I mean, they got the vision, you know, the work from Land of the Sky, the work from Economic Development, Fletcher Partners, and everybody having a piece in it. To be able to, to have this connect, and to have complete streets and everything for $650,000, this is the way a community gets a project done. From the beginning, it's been going on so long, I want to thank Commissioner Newman, who's on the MPO, been on the MPO for a long time, and his work in being supportive of this, and being pragmatic in that support at the same time. I want to thank Commissioner Presley for his support, you know, early in the middle of the community over there, and then I know that the rest of the, I've had numerous conversations with other people on the board, and how excited I believe they are about it also. But this is going to be amazing, what it's going to do for that community over there. And then we can challenge everybody else to connect those sidewalks. You know, there's some city sidewalks right, once we put this in, there's some sidewalks where we can connect, and we can, there's some, there's some people that'll be walking their kids to school across, across that road. And I'm real excited about it. We've got our, you know, our fire department going there, and so all these things just happen and come together, and in a perfect storm, or, you know, by an intervention, however you want to look at it, but I'm very excited about it, and I'm hopeful that it's going to happen quicker than what everybody, what everybody's saying. And I know they're all committed to it, and nobody's going to be getting away with anything, they're really going to be pushing it very hard. I challenge the media to change the name of the bridge, from the bridge to nowhere, to the bridge to about five or six things if you want to listen. Because that is done.
To four things.
Huh? No, it's not four, we're not doing four anymore tonight. But anyhow, I'm very grateful that y'all worked so hard on this, and it's just been a vision for a lot of folks, and it took a lot of people to bring it together. I thank the community for being behind it. And I do want to give a, now it just popped in my mind, there's some people out, I do want to give a shout-out to Connect Inca, who is a big proponent of the Inca Heritage Trail over there at Garrett Arts, and this was a dream of his, you know, he walked his kids to Inca Elementary over there, and I had an opportunity to do that with my grandson over there. And the Inca Cantler Business Association's been behind this, and should be excited about it, and, but I just want to give a shout-out to everybody that could. Thank you for pulling it, pulling it off, guys, great work.
All right. That said, any other comments from, is there a motion?
I'll move, probably.
There's a motion, and a second. Are there any members of the public who want to comment? And also, the next item on the agenda is related geographically, so if you have any comments, just go ahead and share those as well prior. Mr. Rice, do you want to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I got a name for the bridge. A cesspool of toxic waste dump. Now, you might look at me and look like a fool, but you environmentalists and you people up on that board don't know one flip about what you're talking about when you talk about this place out here. The people that owns it are billionaires, and it absolutely guts me to think that you're giving them 65% of the money when NAPR comes in here, and they only get 170,000 of the 118 million. Now, what is the difference here? You going to play politics with it? That's exactly what you're doing. You should be fair to all. But here's the fairness, you should never put this school there, you should never put these trails there, you should never agree to any of this here on this toxic waste dump site, and these millionaires are profiting off of our children. Off of our children, do you hear that? Public safety, do you know what public safety is? Built on a dump site? No wonder they can't get the money to build the bridge over there without your help. I'd be ashamed, Joe, to even represent the community in this, and you brag about it. You are wrong, but either, and I'm a Republican. I'd be ashamed to even represent it. And you Democrats, if you vote for it, you're just as guilty as they are because of the environmental issues you're going to know about. So when it comes to this money, let the millionaires pull it out of their pocket. They're getting all this federal money, all this state money, they're going through all this process. They should be fitting the bill, not us as taxpayers. One of these days, the toxic is going to come out. When they're building the bridge, there's an explosion there, right where they're digging the footers. Have you heard that on the news? There's a lot of chemical in that water you don't hear about. The water treatment plant, you don't hear about. It's been in the newspaper for years about the water treatment, and all the chemical and all the mess that's there. Do you understand what I'm talking about? I don't think you do. I know the history, and these millionaires, they know it. That's the reason they're getting the money that they're getting, they know how to siphers it off of the system. I'd hate to be in their shoes and went down at night and tried to sleep. That's my piece. Do yours.
All right. Anyone else? Clark?
Mr. Chairman, I don't underestimate the great value and necessity of this infrastructure, and I also can't underestimate the challenge it presents to the county encountering these kind of expenses. So I'd like to just real quickly applaud the partnership that the county, Fletcher Partners, and the DOT have struck to, to make this happen. The kind of economic development that we aspire to in Buncombe County that will diversify our economy, and grow wages, and grow tax base, requires these investments in infrastructure. And I look at it the same way that I look at the really important investments that this commission has made in education, and childcare, and affordable housing, and yes, industrial site development, and yes, roads and infrastructure like you're doing today. For many, many years, Joe, we have heard from Bonner, and Jacob Holm, and Southeastern Container, now We Can Weed, and New Belgium, and soon to be joined by 165 employees at Hockon, as they've advocated for a safe and efficient way to pull traffic off of Sand Hill Road towards the, towards the interstate. So I see return on investment in terms of safety, and in terms of efficiency, and definitely in long-term economic growth over there in Inca Commerce Park. So, thank you for your interest.
All right, anyone else? All right. We have a motion and a second.
Yes, I do. Mr. Veltzer, I support you too, because this is a big asset to the Inca Cantler area. Me being out there, knowing what it's going to do for, number one, Mr. Beddenfield's new station there, to access from Sand Hill Road over to Scratch Inca, or 1923, whatever you call that little thing, the time, we know what traffic problems we've got there. It's going to be a big asset. The school, as in walking the kids back and forth, we've talked about that for years, and, you know, I just can't believe that we're sitting there and have anyone say that we're putting the kids' safety in there, because we have to trust that we went through every environmental thing that you could to make it safe. And if we're going to sit there and talk about the safety, I mean, just walking outside is not safe sometimes, you know, environmentally, or whatever you want to do. I'm very disappointed to hear that we have put people and kids in jeopardy, and that kind of bothers me, so I'm totally supportive of this.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
I just, you know, you guys said it well, but I just, this really has been a lot, a heavy lift, you know, it took a lot of things coming together, and that just wasn't by coincidence or luck, it really was a ton of work, and just Land of Sky, to DOT, the county staff, and private sector partners, I just really also want to add my thanks to everyone for, you know, for coming together and getting this, getting this done. That's great. All in favor? Can you say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all. We do have another item on the same part of Bunkham County, and Tim will tell us about that. Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. So our next topic, we have a few slides, relates to a similar part of town, and relates to a topic you should be familiar with, but a slightly different topic. So we're going to talk about the Inca Heritage Trail easement. And in terms of background, so not the first time you should have heard about this, because March 6th of 2019, at your regular meeting, you approved an easement agreement with a host of partners, including Fletcher Partners, EYSO, and others. That agreement granted to the county, construction easements and permanent easements to construct the Inca Heritage Trail. While the 2019 agreement was good and got us the majority of the easements needed, it didn't get us everything. So today, we're back before you in Bullet Four, to secure the final easement with the Inca Water Corporation. And so that's the agreement that's going to be before you tonight. So our request of the board, this time, we're asking for your approval of the Greenway Easement Agreement with Inca Water Corporation. In terms of getting everyone up to speed on where we're at, so the, Joshua Connor's here, so he can walk us through the Inca Heritage Trail if we have any specific questions, but, so the Heritage Trail is kind of that green, highlighted area with the red line, so that's your trail. The area that you secure the easement on is kind of on the far right, but the proposed easement that we're talking about today is highlighted by yellow, and also has the textbox that says "proposed easement." So that's the easement that we're talking about today. The description of the easement, this is pretty straightforward stuff, but Inca Water agrees to convey the easement to the county for $10. The county agrees to receive the easement. The easement will be granted to the county by December 31st of 2020, and the county reserves the right to do due diligence on the easement as needed. So, that's kind of highlights from the agreement, nothing too crazy. If there's no questions, then this brings me back to the rap, which is, I'm requesting board action for you to approve the Greenway Easement Grant, Easeway. Yeah. Greenway Easement Grant Agreement with Inca Water Corporation.
All right, thank you, Tim. Are there any questions? Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you all very much, appreciate it. Okay, we come to our board appointments, and as we promised at the beginning, we'll, we're gonna, let's, we, let's talk about it for a minute. So, we are going to, well, there's a couple I think we might be able to get done this evening. On the Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, there's three appointments and there's three applicants. Would y'all be comfortable putting ahead with those appointments?
Yes.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve those three.
Seven.
All right, motion to approve Jordan Israel, Mr. Biggum, Mary Linda Treeley. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the American Workforce Development Board, there's one vacant student, one applicant.
I would give approval.
Second?
Motion to appoint Jessica Rice. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, on the others, we do have, you know, multiple, multiple applicants, and so, we're not going to vote on this tonight, but would the commission like to plan on interviewing those applicants? That would be for the Ag Advisory Board, and the Downtown Commission, and the Land Conservation Advisory Board, and the, and the African-American Commissioner. All right, let's plan on inviting those folks to interview, and Lamar, who was the person, who was the board that you brought up getting to?
That was the library board.
The library board. So, and you were saying traditionally, they do an interview and make a recommendation?
Sorry.
So, you know, Commissioner, I'd like to hear your thoughts on this, you know, we've been taking a more active role in interviewing all these folks.
I'd like to hear from the library board, I'd like to hear what their recommendations are, it might make it, it might make it a lot easier for us.
But do we also want to interview for it? I guess that's, I have no problem with them making a recommendation, but are we also going to interview as well?
So how many we got? What's going on in the next one?
It is, but let me get that information. I'm against number four, just wait.
There are three vacancies. And expiration date is in March, but we were trying to get ahead of the situation, let you guys know if you want to interview or not.
Maybe we got to apply?
I don't have that information. I don't have the information.
You know, we need, we need to apply before we can. Okay. You know, I, I will just, you know, we've been spending a lot of time on this, I thought, I think we've got, it's been good, we've gotten good people pointed. I continue to believe we should create a subcommittee of the county commission to work on boards and commissions appointments.
You're not, you're not going to talk about that at eight o'clock at night.
That is, that is, well, I'm just saying, that's my encouraged consideration of that in the future. But if we're not going to do that, then I think it's our job to interview all these people. That's my, my take on it. So I would, I, I mean, for some of these boards where we only have the number of applicants for, for the position, I, you know, I think that's different. But if we have a lot of applicants for something, then I, I, I think to me, that's kind of the default.
I mean, we can go with like, I mean, what we've been doing, if we get 25, we can pick the top ones to interview. We've been doing that, so I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so we'll add the library board applicants as well. Once those come in. I'm sorry, what was the deadline for that?
Expiration is in March, we have advertised for those positions.
Okay.
So I don't think the advertisement has expired yet.
Well, so, so, okay, well, why don't we make a final decision once we know how many come in? See if there's 50, maybe we'll narrow it down. But, but I guess, you know, do we want to tell the library board, look, you know, our plan is to interview the applicants for this? It doesn't mean you can't make the recommendation, but, you know, do you need to, I'm sorry, what?
Would you want them to do a screening in Sand Hill Road, or you want to do all 50?
I don't think we're going to get that many, but why don't we, that's a good idea though. Why don't we, but why don't we hold up making a final decision on how we'll handle that once we know how many people are applying?
We, we haven't contacted the library about it, but we wanted to get information from the board so we could let the library know what kind of decision would be made. But we can definitely contact the library and kind of fill them out and let them know how the board feels as far as if they would do interviews or not.
Sounds good. All right. We now come to public comments.
I would also like to say, when we adopted the new policy for the boards and commission, one of the requests was to have the vacant positions for a year ahead, or it wasn't a year ahead, but it was to have those advertised early. So we have put that on our website for the whole year. And I also gave you a handout, Chairman Newman, with those if you want to announce those. I think you had stated at one point in time you wanted to announce upcoming vacancies.
Yes.
So it's up to you.
Yeah, thank you very much for doing that. And we will encourage people to go to our website to check all this out. So let me, yeah, let me just mention a couple of these, not for the whole year, but just that are coming up in the near future. In March, we are going to have vacancies on the Historic Resources Commission, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, the Library Board. In April, there's going to be openings on the Buncombe County Board of Adjustments, the Planning Board, Mountain Area Workforce Development Board, and AB Tech Community College Board Trustees. So if you're interested in any of those community boards, then please learn more about them on the county's website and consider applying. Thank you for doing that. All right.